Yes, I'm here.
I'm going to go ahead and call the Alasor County Meeting to Order, which is the, this is a joint meeting to hopefully resolve the conflict resolution, Chapter 164. We will be scheduling a later meeting for us to have some dialogue on some joint issues, which I'll get to in commission comments, but before we get started, Commissioners, could I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Seconded.
Got a motion and a second to adopt the agenda, and the timing is good because we have the Honorable Commissioner Wheeler and Commissioner Alfred entering. But before we get to that motion, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this motion? Hello Commissioners? So we are in the process of adopting the motion. Did you have any changes to the agenda? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So that motion is unanimous. Mayor?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Now, we're going to go ahead and do the same process for the city of Newberry. We are at the point to approve this agenda. Do I have a motion from a Commissioner to approve the agenda as it was published with no additions or changes? I have a motion from Commissioner Northfleet, a second from Commissioner Martin. Any comments or questions on the agenda on the floor from the dais? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Ladies and gentlemen, we are streaming this live. If you'd like to call in and make a comment on the motions, that's the motion on the floor to approve the agenda with no changes. Now would be the appropriate time to do so. All you need to do is dial that phone number. That'll get you into the meeting. Once you're in the meeting, simply look at the bottom of your screen. You'll see a little hand symbol. Click that hand symbol. That lets know you'd like to address the commission. Make sure you have the opportunity to do so. Again, the motion on the floor, so approve the agenda with no changes. Doubts, do we have anyone with a hand raised? Seeing none, we'll go for a roll call vote. Commissioner Farnsworth, we'll begin with you.
Aye.
Commissioner Northfleet, Commissioner Norman, Commissioner Clark. Motion passes unanimously. I'd like to invite Pastor Armin Lowry from Mount Zerreful Gospel Baptist Church to the dais to give us our invocation. Ladies and gentlemen, if you are zooming in, it is perfectly acceptable to either bow your head or stand with us. Either one is fine. Please remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Lowry, thank you for joining us here tonight, breathing the weather to be here.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us bow heads. Gracious God, as we come at this moment, we invite your presence into this room, into this place, into this meeting. I pray, God, that as your presence is here and we acknowledge it, that, Lord, we will be governed by your Spirit and your presence. Look upon each of us as we conduct business tonight, Lord, that is concerned about our city, our community, our county. Let it be civil. Let it be in grace. Let it be respectful. Have mercy upon us in this moment, Lord, and continue to bless us in this time of a pandemic. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
United States of America.
For what it stands, the nation, the God, and it is all for liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, we have only one item on the agenda tonight, and before we go into what I'm sure would be riveting presentations from your staff and my staff and your legal team and my legal team, I wanted to take one opportunity to pitch one idea, which was the same idea I pitched when I came before your board, before that Commissioner Hutchinson said sounded like a slam dunk victory to him. We have five annexations in front of us tonight. All of them, at this point, either meet state law or meet your board's stated policy of seeing reducing an enclave as just reducing an enclave and not creating new one. We have one parcel that is, it's a single parcel, but it's an odd shape. It's kind of looks like two squares that are connected one. I will, would suggest that we go back to letting my board deal with de-annexing that or handling that one, and we let the other ones go, and we all set a record for the very, shortest conflict resolution known to man, and we set a nice precedent with a new board of working together, because I think we all want to take out these enclaves and reduce them. So that would be my suggestion, and that may save us an awful lot of time, and we've spent a lot of time, spent a year of meetings on this already. So that's, that's my suggestion.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think as both staffs are going through that presentation, maybe we can start with that, and then we can see what their recommendations.
So do we, I say in public interest, we should do that.
Does our county manager have any problem with that?
What?
Yeah, I think that at least if staff shows you the map so you can see what they're talking about and the concerns that staff has, our overall concern has been, and that was brought up during the staff level, but we did not, that was not specifically agreed to as part of the staff level discussion, but I think the overarching concern that county staff had was, we don't want to be in these dispute resolutions every six months, and we wanted to hopefully come to an agreement that, for the most part, settle annexation issues moving forward for the long term. And I was not comfortable recommending to you and the community that didn't have that level of comfort in it, which is why his staff was.
I still like it though.
Mayor, could you maybe have your staff explain?
Can I?
That would help me too, because I'm having a hard time.
Sure. And, and I'm not sure if we can blow that up anymore, Brian, but if you have a laptop, you should see it on your screen at this point. For Commissioner Prizzi and Commissioner Alfred, you weren't on the dais when I came and addressed the B O C C. We annexed these five parcels, and we've been operating under a longstanding agreements with the B O C C that what we really want is to wipe out all these enclaves. We want to make Newberry a contiguous whole, reduce the redundancies, those kinds of things. So two of these annexations, we went after specifically on advice from Commissioner Cornell or other Commissioners in the effort of wiping these enclaves out. So about a year ago, I came and presented. It is Ordinance 2020-10, which is, if you can hover your marker over it, whoever's working the Zoom, the one in your top left corner, that's the one that really caused a lot of heartburn, because it's one parcel, but it looks like two, because it's a kind of two blocks that are just touching at that point. The problem is, is just one parcel. Now, there's five, I believe, parcels inside that ordinance. So what I'm suggesting, so out of the five red boxes that you're seeing, when your staff made the presentation to you, they accepted that three of them either fit state law, I think one of these is added on later, three of them either fit state law or they fit your long-established policy of reducing the size of already existing enclaves. I offered then that we would take 2020-10 back to our board, and we would work to either de-annex that or work with the property owner to, to separate that parcel into two surveys, and we would take off the one that's kind of sticking out. The suggestion was made that if you objected, that they could be used for larger negotiations in other areas. My suggestion was, you know, let's, let's annex the ones that are inside the city of Newberry that are reducing size of the parcels or the enclaves, and I'll work on 2020-10. The motion that won the day was to lump them together, use them for further conversations. I would suggest that we can have all of those further conversations when that's the item on the agenda, but right now, these fit that long-held policy of trying to get continuity inside the city of Newberry, and we would certainly be willing to work on 2020-10, because we understand that that one is kind of the one that's really problematic. So that's my suggestion. Let the other four go and give us a chance to work on 2020-10. We're in the same mindset that we want to either separate the parcels out or de-annex the parcel inside that ordinance that is the problem. Commissioner, you have a, I don't know if you want me to address.
Would it be possible to consider that proposal when you have Parcel 10 de-annexed and have it be that one big package when it all happens together?
Well, I think that's, that's kind of a legal question, because in my view, the easiest way to de-annex that parcel is for you guys to continue your objection, and when we go in front of the moderator or the judge, we voluntarily move for dismissal and accept that that one's not. The problem for us to, to un-annex it, you have to do it by a referendum. When you do a referendum, only the people who live on the parcels can vote, not who owns the parcel. You have to live there, and nobody lives on that parcel, so there would be no one to vote, but that would be my suggestion. I'm certainly willing, if Scott says, no, 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 you don't understand this process right, but I think that that would be the easiest, no-nonsense way to move forward. We let these other annexations go, because they're all either connecting at this point or they're reducing the size of an enclave. We'll deal with this one, and that would be my suggestion, but I'm willing to listen to advice on other ways to handle 2020-10, because that seems to be the rub.
Nice. Say something?
Yeah, please, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It seems that 2029 is also, it's not reducing a, um, it's not reducing the enclaves that you have inside your city, and in fact, it's further enclaving a piece of property, those pieces of property that are below it. So while I agree what you're saying in, in principle of this idea of sort of, let's let go of some, let's keep some, and let's get done with this conversation, and then we can have a conversation about boundaries and where we, where we move forward in terms of opportunity, it seems to me that 2029 also is not, doesn't meet the definition of not creating an annex or not creating an enclave and being within the city.
Yeah.
Commissioner Prizzi, I think that our map is missing a big chunk of this that furthers the connectivity. Also, 2020-9, we went after specifically on Commissioner Cornell's advice, because what we're trying to do is fill in that entire enclave. So if you, if you take the, the brown line and you move it west about half of the distance between the brown line and Dudley Farm, that parcel is now annexed into the city of New it roughly in that area. I'm just estimating here. So there's more connectivity there than what the, what I think the map is showing.
Okay.
But our goal is, on Commissioner Cornell's advice, is if then we can get that parcel that separates, and if we can get the state to annex Dudley Farm, and then we can close out that entire enclave together. And that's always the goal. I mean, I think that some people have this idea that, that at some magic time, we're going to be able to wave a wand and get rid of all these enclaves in the city of Newberry. I think the more logical approach is that over the next 100 years, all of these parcels will voluntarily come in, and we've got to take them when we have a property owner who wants to come in. So that's kind of been our approach of, let's, let's fill in all of these things, and we really, we believed that we were on the same page with the B O C C on that front, of this is the best, most patient way to get the job done. So I understand your concern about 2029, but that was the long-term goal that was really strategized by Commissioner Cornell in 2016.
Commissioner Prizzi, I'm going to recognize Michelle Lieberman.
Oh, yes. I just wanted to point out on 2020-09, the parcel that it connects to, to the east, that section was your prior dispute resolution, or dispute over annexation, that whole chunk right there from the year prior, and it is a dispute resolution process that has not been completed. So it is attached to a parcel, to several parcels, which you already were, had disputed.
So I mean, a question would be, Mr. Mayor, taking your proposal but adding '09 to that, would that be an opportunity to resolve so that we could take '06, '04, and '13, but we de-annex '09 and '10?
I think the more logical solution would be to accept 2020-09, which would then eradicate the objection you had to that other parcel, because now it is connected. So that, that moves us further towards filling in the gaps. Instead of taking one away and leaving that gap there, if we accept 2020-09, then your primary objection to the other parcel also disappears, and now we move further and closer to actually filling in these, these holes. What do you think about that?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Prizzi, let me just make this one comment, and then, then I'll recognize you. One of the, one of the discussion points when we annex that one that is in dispute that is now connected to '09 is, we didn't object as much because it was right on Newberry Road, but by accepting that, you're essentially creating the opportunity for more enclaves, which is where we are. But I, I understand your logic, and it makes sense as the, we are where we are. Commissioner Prizzi, go ahead.
I, I guess my, my comment was going to be this. In, in an effort to move forward and to create relationships and build bridges with the commission, and in an effort to recognize that all of the enclaves that he's, he's talking about are within the boundaries that we were proposing for Newberry as an annexation sort of boundary in general, I would be in favor of it. However, I think it's, it's difficult for, it's difficult to sort of say, let's decouple those conversations then, because part of why I would be in favor of it is that it's inside that boundary that we're proposing, and we're asking that, that boundary be considered for a period of time. And so to me, those two things then become tied together, and it becomes difficult to have a conversation of, just trust us, and then we'll have another conversation. And I want to do that, I really do. I want to say, in good faith, let's do it, let's move forward. It's in that boundary that we've proposed, and if we've, if we've already got more, you know, more space in there that's creating an enclave, then let's move forward.
So I hear. So Commissioner Prizzi, what I hear is a counterproposal to the proposal, which is, we might accept that if they would accept our line.
Yep.
Well, first, I want to clarify, Commissioner Prizzi, because what I'm not asking for anyone to go on trust. What I'm asking is you guys make the motion that you accept all these four, and then right after that, my board would make the motion that we will actively seek to de-annex the parcel inside. So there, there's no trust there, and from my perspective, my board has put forth lots of different ideas and opportunities and options, so I think we have a pretty good history of a good faith record, but I would be willing to ask my board to vote on that to de-annex the one parcel out of 2020-10. If I get a head nod that right after that, you guys would make a motion to not object to the other four in that, if that's, if that's your holdup.
The staff presentations are going well, which is actually fine. I want to recognize Commissioner Wheeler, then Commissioner Alfred, but I think Commissioner Prizzi, just to clarify, what you're saying is, you would make that motion after the Newberry Board, after the Newberry Board passed, that they would let go of 2020-10, but you would like to add that they also put in the line that our staff proposed?
Yes, what, what I heard in the, or I'll just say, what I heard, Mr. Chair, in the earlier proposal was that they would de-annex it, and then they would split the parcels and then re-annex them, was what I heard them say at the very beginning, and so, or that they would re-annex one of the parcels and not the other one once they'd split the parcels. So that's not really de-annexing, it's just sort of shifting things around for a period of time. And I guess what I, I guess what I'm looking for, Mr. Chair, is I think we're trying to have two different conversations here. One is about the growth of Newberry and its boundaries, and how much growth it's looking to undertake over time, and the other one is about these annexations and, and the constant conflict that we have with those annexations. And I think that Mayor Marlowe is right, that those two things are two different conversations to have, but unfortunately, they've become one and the same, because they, they're, we're having so many on the fringes. So yes, I'm saying that I would accept those other annexes if they de-annex 2020-10, but not with the anticipation that they would just re-annex it.
Okay. Commissioner Wheeler and then Commissioner Alfred.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to, is 2020-10 this one parcel, or is it that? I don't know. Yes, sir. I will.
Trying to make sure that is the 2020-10 piece, this whole section here, or, I'm, I'm looking at this map right here. Is it?
There are, there are five parcels inside that red map, and there's, on the big, on the big rectangle that has a little jut out, right there. So the, the map that has the dotted line around it, that's the parcel number inside the ordinance that has caused all the problems. And the, the issue there is, that's one parcel. I know you look at it and you say that's two separate landowners, but it's one parcel, one owner who they've voluntarily asked to come in. So what my suggestion is, is we just go back to that one owner called the windmill property, and we say, this, this property is causing too much heartache, we work, you figure out some method, methodology of de-annexing that, and then we let the other four, which are that small rectangle there, and just so you know, we have an application in hand to annex the bulk of the territory between, was that a trapezoid or, on the east, thank you, geometry, and, and that leftover rectangle. So that would be.
Something's going.
Commissioner Prizzi, as a last point, I think the county does have that line at this point. You have the GMA, so why would we ever, there's no incentive at any, at this point for anyone to annex into that, so you guys have your, there it is.
I, I can't hear if somebody's speaking.
Okay. Is it? Okay. I've got it on now, I think. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You all can see her, all right. I'm, I'm trying to understand the green then. Is this one awaiting annexation? Right, so I'm trying to understand why you would want to give that away then.
Can you share the map?
I mean, the, the red, the part that you're, the 2020-10, it looks like you were getting ready to annex all of that in.
Mike is coming up to me. So where he's pointing now, that's what I'm suggesting we would do away with, and potentially even the other box, if we can't get the property owner to survey and separate the parcels out.
Okay, I'm looking at the arrow.
So it may be the entire area that has the dashes around it, it could be that we ask him vociferously to survey and separate those two parcels out and separate the one that's, because right now it's one parcel, but the, the green is coming in, which makes even more connectivity.
Exactly, that's, that's why I was confused.
And fills in a bigger pocket.
I see. So it's the little piece that you're, because the arrow on this map that I'm looking at on page four is pointing directly at the middle piece, and that's why I was trying to understand.
I think the, the wording is cut off, and that's a future annexation, annexation petitions that we have filed.
That you're already in your.
They've already filed, they've already started the process.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, is the proposal then for them to de-annex 2020-10, and then split the parcels, and then re-annex the western parcel of 2020-10?
No. My proposal is to take one parcel number, Parcel 04152-000-000, out of Ordinance 2010, to go back to the property owner and figure out how to do that, because we're limited at this point in how you actually can de-annex. So one way would be to split off the northeastern parcel and have him actually divide that land up into two parcel numbers, and then take off the point-to-point connectivity, because there would be no objection to the other shape, or we just take that parcel out completely and say, we couldn't make that work for you, and we would support either of those options. That's my, that's my proposal. So there are, there are five parcel numbers in Ordinance 2020-10. The four that make that small rectangle, that will be very well-connected once that green has gone through the process, we're not, those aren't the problem. No one's really objecting to that. They're objecting to the point-to-point connectivity, that's what's giving everybody heartache. I think it falls into this gray area of the law, because it's actually all one parcel, and people have a really, really hard time wrapping their minds around the fact that that's one parcel, one piece of land. You look at it and it looks like it's two. So I, I don't know what that de-annexation looks like. I think the, the best thing would be to get the property owner to cut it into two separate parcels, and then take off the point-to-point, but if failing his compliance with that, I think we would then say, well, you can either have half of it in Newberry or none of it in Newberry, and we would go through the process of figuring out how best to de-annex it. While you're pondering on that, let me recognize City Manager Mike New.
There's just a minor point, but that small piece that was not in green, that the only unconnected piece in there, that property owner has expressed willingness to come in, we just don't have the application to come in. So we would fill that whole block in, we believe, if they, if that property owner follows through on this commitment, then if we would fill that whole thing in, providing connectivity all the way to 100, no, to 202.
That's, that's a good point. Okay, Manager Lieberman, and then Commissioner Alfred.
Mr. Chair, I would only suggest that if the board is inclined to accept Mayor Marlowe's suggestion or offer on, on, in this case as far as 2020-10, that it be made clear that those annexation petitions are also part of that contingency, because without those annexation petitions, that one rectangle actually suffers from the same point-to-point issue that the other parcel does, so I think they both have to be part of that if the board is still inclined to accept that.
I see, I see nods from the city's passing Newberry staff saying that makes sense. Commissioner Prizzi, we'll do Commissioner Alfred, and then back to you, okay? Go ahead, Commissioner Alfred, you're recognized.
Thank you. I was actually going to make the same point that Ms. Lieberman did, but I just wanted to state that I am, in general, in favor of the proposal here, and I would be willing to make that motion after the Newberry next stairs.
Thank you, Commissioner Prizzi.
I was going to make a similar comment to Michelle, and I was going to state that I think it, I do, I do feel like those, those other green parcels in order to create contingency are, are how you're arguing that that parcel is contiguous. So I just want to be clear that there actually was argument about all of that annexation, because none of it was contiguous, not just the non-point-to-point. So I just want to be clear that none of them were touching, except for that you happen, we now have submitted annexation petitions that create that potential connectivity, which, again, because it's within sort of the area that we've all been in discussion about, and, and because it, it does bring forward those options, I'd be willing to work with that motion, but.
Thank you, Commissioner Prizzi. So we're wrapping up the Commissioners' presentations, and now, before we get, turn it back over to the mayor, Chuck, did you have any comments you wanted to make? I, I don't know if you've been raising your hand, I haven't been able to see you.
That, that's all right. I, I guess I, right now, I'm just having some issues with the legality of this in terms of, from what staff is saying, so I mean, is it not contiguous, or is it is contiguous, or? Or those are the issues I'm having in compactness. I'm, I'm just concerned about, about those issues. I mean, you know, I, I, I agree with some of them, but I don't agree with all of them. And that's, that's the issue I'm having. So I mean, we're structuring a deal here, but does it meet the statute's requirement? And I have no problem with doing what meets the statute requirements. But if we continue to do things illegally or not by the statute, then in the future there, there comes an issue. That you've done it before, why you can't do it now? I mean, that's, I just want to follow the law. I mean, I just want to make sure that what I'm about to do is, is legit and not creating issues and problems down the road. If, if we're trying to solve this issue, let's solve it, but let's do it legally and correctly so that in the future we're on the same page and not going back through another dispute resolution. And that's, that's the point I, I want to get to. So you know, if I can hear from staff legally about, about some of this and what's being proposed, if we can or can do it, then you know, that's what I want to hear.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Hanson, are you on the, are you on the call?
I am, Mr. Chair.
Do you want to give a comment to the chair, to the commissioner?
As far as the legality of it goes, when you initiated this process, you made findings that all of the annexations that were covered did not meet the requirements of the statute. So while it may be filling in an enclave, it was also creating an additional enclave. So that would be the basis of the legal challenge and that was the basis of initiating this process. If for whatever reason, as you go through this process, you determine that the, as the board, that the concerns you had are no longer relevant. For instance, if you thought there were inefficiency of service concerns that were created by these annexations. And as the board, you decided that through maybe a separate agreement or some other solution, these annexations no longer created those inefficiencies, you do not have to pursue the challenge that you initiated in this process. You could, you could essentially walk away and say, we accept a certain number of the annexations. I believe Mr. Mayor Marlowe mentioned, you know, four of the annexations. Now, on that point, I would not recommend just walking away from those at this meeting. What you could do under 164, which is the statute we're operating under, you can continue to schedule additional meetings where the joint boards can either have a mediator or can continue to work on these issues together. And in that interim period, the city of Newberry could work on contracting and as he, as mentioned, deannexing the area that was in 2020-10, that windmill piece. You don't have to walk away from them all tonight and then allow Newberry to pursue that at a later time. What you could do is essentially continue the conversation while allowing the contraction to occur.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chestnut, just to follow up on that, again, I would say we already have a longstanding relationship that dates back four years at this point that identifies that we need to start closing in these enclaves. So we have plenty of examples going back over the last four years where your board has made this determination. So, and, and we always seem to get to this point. So one of the things I would like us to consider is when your board says, if it's reducing the size of an already existing enclave, we don't want to object to it, I'd like that to be part of your motion to your staff because you take that position, you say that publicly. And then two or three of the annexations out of these five were gone after specifically to address the concerns of your board. So when I say Newberry's made a good faith effort, I've held, I've gone door to door and left notes on people's doors. We've had workshops, we've held a referendum. You know, I personally called up people and said, this is what the, the BOCC and the city of Newberry are walking lockstep, hand in hand to, to close out these enclaves. And we bring, we bring these three to you, which again, were specifically, we, we thought we had direction. Go close these enclaves out. And yet we find ourselves back here in, in conflict resolution over the same thing. So Mr. Chestnut, I don't see any legal ramifications here. We can show you all the examples, recent examples where we have worked well on this. And we have worked to close these enclaves out. None of these here rise to the level of, of some of the other ones that we have done. Because we've all recognized that if we're ever really going to close these enclaves out, we got to take them as they come. So I'm certainly willing to continue, but from my standpoint, my city and my staff has, have four years of a record of following through and going door to door and holding these workshops and pulling people's tax records saying, this is what it will look like for you if you annex into the city of Newberry, so that they can make the most informed decision possible. So I, I would like the BOCC to reflect on that and take that to heart. Because when I say I'm going to do something, that's what we go do. And it's, it's, when we say, when we make an agreement, we say, let's go close out the enclaves. That's what I think we have an agreement on. And the bulk of these annexations are reducing existing enclaves. So I, I would like to see a little good faith back and forth here.
Yeah, but, but Mayor, I think that I understand what you're saying, but, but, but we are reducing enclaves, but we're also creating new ones.
Only, I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner, but only in the most fine newt legal definition of the word. If you take, if you take 2020-06 as your example, the new enclave that is being created is just east of the red block. Now, that's an already existing enclave. It's there. The whole thing is an enclave. So when your attorney says you're creating new enclaves, that's what he's talking about. I don't think any reasonable person on the face of the planet would look at 2020-06 and say, you're creating a new enclave. I think the most logical thing would be I'm reducing the size of an enclave.
Well, that, that's not my argument. My argument is 2020-09, that creates a new enclave. 2020-10, to me, creates a new enclave. 2020-13 is questionable. It would, it would meet the con, the definition of compactness to me. But, you know, so I, I'm just saying, so it's, you know, that's just my opinion, so.
Mr. Chair, just real quickly, since we're talking about the legality, I think there's a misapprehension of the facts with respect to 2020-10.
There is substantial contiguity on the western portion, the property that is outlined in, in the, in the red on 2020-10. So it has contiguity. If you look County Road 235 and then the shaded area next to that leading out to the parcel 04152-000000, that is in the city already. So there's substantial contiguity there with the additional annexation south of that parcel that was shown in the green in the earlier outline, there will be further contiguity as well. So there is contiguity in, in that particular parcel. With respect to ordinance number 2020-09, that was just referenced. There is, there is not a closure on that property. So there is not an enclave created as per the statute, at least in our view. Because Dudley Farms is, is, there is a portion of the property on the north that is still unincorporated in Latshaw County. And I think as Attorney Hanson said just a minute ago, a substantial amount of staff's time, both on the city of Newberry and the county staff, referenced the efficient delivery of, efficiency in the delivery of services. And as you know, we contract with the sheriff, so there's really no change in delivery of services as far as law enforcement. We contract with you and we service much of unincorporated Latshaw County with our fire services. And when we boiled it all down, really the only area that we talked about, and I think it's in the notes from county staff, that the solid waste delivery is really the area that we needed to look at. And my understanding is that you all were working with WCA and contract renewal to have a provision that would allow for city of Newberry residents and folks along the lines there in the unincorporated area, that they could have curbside pickup via Waste Pro, which is our solid waste provider. So you were looking to add that in, in your, in your contractual negotiations with WCA. And we're in alignment and complete agreement with that. So I think the efficiency and delivery of service point of it that Attorney Hanson mentioned is, is in full force as part of, a, a part of our discussions between county and, and city. I would acknowledge and I, and I agree with the commissioners, county commissioners at this point, that we're looking for resolution. And I, and I think both of our local governments are, are working in that vein. I'm seeing that happening with this board all over the county right now. It's happened in High Springs. It's happening down in Archer and we want to see that happen in Newberry as well. So thank you for your attention and, and the work that you're doing as well.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Anna, Commissioner Prizzi, can I go to you and then Ken, Mr. Zeigner? I see you've had your hand up very patiently waiting. We'll recognize you very next.
They can go first.
Okay, Mr. Zeigner, you've got the floor.
Yes. Putting some of these bigger picture discussions that were brought up about idle limits. The line that the county proposed is not the growth management area line. It's within that. I just have a specific question, since I sat through just about all of the conflict assessment processes. And I guess this is really a question for perhaps Mr. Walker and maybe Mr. Hanson. One of the things early on in the process that was thrown out for discussion was the idea with respect to 2020-10 of contracting part of, part or all of that parcel out. So that you didn't have the point-to-point or you didn't have the, the less sort of obvious questions that are still there about contiguity. And as I recall the discussion, I believe it was Mr. Walker and maybe other staff, pointed out that under the statute, there is no process for contracting like that. I've heard Mayor Marlowe talk about speaking with the property owner, but I don't know if there have been discussions with the property owner about agreeing to do that and where that would leave things. Because that kind of, that was an aspect of the early discussions that was kind of a non-starter because we hit this question about what the process would be for removing a parcel. I understand the discussion is that somehow that would be worked out. But it would be helpful, I think, to understand how that would be done. Because as I said, early on in the process, we hit, hit a, a wall, as I recall. And maybe other staff who was in that discussion recalls differently. But I'd be curious what the thoughts are, perhaps by Mr. Walker, about how that, either that point-to-point and/or other parts of that could be removed.
Okay, I'm going to ask God to, to answer that question because I posed it earlier. First, I, Commissioner Prizzi, I haven't got about you, but I'm thrilled to hear that staff was on board with my proposal all the way back at the beginning. We just couldn't figure out how to deannex this. And at the beginning of the meeting, it may be a little bit difficult to hear through the mask, but I, I, and that's why I have to ask for some patience and rely on four years of us actively working to do what we say we've done and a little bit of faith on both parts. Because it may be that the easiest way to go forth is, since we have this problem with deannexing through a referendum that nobody lives in, it may be that we allow everything else to go. We take this one parcel out. We take that to the moderator and then our motion is, we say that we motion that when we get to the moderator, we will, we will ask for voluntary dismissal, which would make the county the winner. And then that may be the easiest, cleanest way to pull it out. So that is in my mind, I, I don't play, I'm not an attorney. I just play one on TV, right? That may be the easiest way to go. We have asked the property owner to survey and break those two parcels up. He has said he, he really wants them both in the city of Newberry. I think we could go back to him and, and a little more forcefully say, it's either one or the other. We're either going to, we're going to make a motion in front of a judge for voluntary dismissal and you, and all of it will come out. Or you can break it up into two and you can keep the part that's, doesn't have the connectivity issue. I don't. I think, I think we could. And, and I, my concern here is what I'm hearing is, well, let's, let's table all of this while Newberry goes on and gets more annexations. Again, I would point to the fact that we've done that for four years. We have a four-year record of going out and getting more annexations. So I think I'm asking for a little bit of good faith. Let's put some of these behind us. These four that are up there, let's put those behind us and let us continue working. But I, I'd like to hear you guys say to your staff that we are making this policy decision. If it's reducing size of an enclave, then, then we're not going to object to it. So you guys don't object. I would also tell you that we have changed our internal policies because of this. So now, before we vote on it, we send it to your staff to say, are you going to make an objection? So we are doing our part to try to communicate a little bit better. So I, I would hope that we're not in this position again. Because if you guys say you're going to object, then we would come back to our board and we'd have a conversation. Mr. Walker, you, tell us if my pseudo-attempt at being a lawyer has any merit.
Pretty darned good job, Mr. Mayor. And Ken made an excellent point and a very good question. How do you get there? What do you do and how do you get there from here? And I, I believe if the referendum process to deannex or contract is not available to us and we can't get there, then the logical conclusion of this proceeding is that there would be litigation. So you go to the mediator initially. We've talked about Carlos Alvarez as our mediator. It seems to me that we may not need to do that.
Yeah, he'd be great. He handled the Latshaw.
Terrific, terrific mediator. So we would agree to him right off the bat if that's what we needed to do. But we may not need to get there because we're all in agreement on this.
Right.
So I, I think what the mayor is saying is, in, in, in answer to Ken's question, is that we would stipulate that at least that eastern portion of the point-to-point annexation on ordinance 2020-10 does not meet the requisites of the state statute for contiguity and it needs to be severed out. And we'd stipulate an order being entered by the Court of Competent Jurisdiction, our circuit judge, that would say that portion gets severed out and end the story if, if we can't get to a situation where we can contract under the statute. And I think that may be problematic.
That, that approach makes sense to me. Mr. Hanson and then Commissioner Alfred.
Just, Mr. Chair, just a comment on a couple of those points. As far as the, the next steps go, under the 164 process, if we're going to proceed towards litigation, a required step is mediation. So we would have to go through that in order to get before a judge to be. As far as the process for contracting and whether or not a referendum is actually required, you know, we don't do any, any contracting as far as the county goes. But our office would certainly be happy to talk and, and work with the city attorney's office to determine what that process would be and come back and report to the board of county commissioners with a timeline or what, what the next steps would be. And in that interim, you could keep this process going while we get a better, clearer picture of what the next steps are and what options are available. Another thing that was discussed is the idea that there was some precedent. I, I did want to just touch on that very briefly. As far as these go, every annexation, every 164 process involving an annexation, they all present a unique set of circumstances. It's a unique concern. It could be a, a unique inefficiency that's identified. And despite the idea that there may have been prior board policy that if you're filling in an enclave, we don't, we don't care, there isn't necessarily precedent in that that would prohibit the county from pursuing a challenge later. The board has indicated more of an interest in long-term solutions, which might be something like a, a joint planning agreement in an area, somewhere that we could take care of some of the inefficiencies that Mr. Walker identified, like waste services. Or we could identify how those inefficiencies would be addressed so that we do not have this problem going forward. And that would be more of a long-term, multi-party approach rather than just the county working on its own agreement with its voice provider. But as I mentioned, you know, we would be happy to work with the city attorney's office to discuss what the contraction process would be like. And in the interim, we could, we could schedule more of these meetings to give you a clearer picture.
Commissioner Alfred.
Well, I actually was going to make a motion just to move the conversation along.
Go ahead, you're recognized.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Can I ask my question first?
Go ahead, Commissioner Prizia, ask your question.
Sorry. This is possibly a question for the attorneys as well. In this, the area that's between Route 235 and I think that's 202nd Street, that's sort of a, a white area that, that where the property in question, 2020-10, and the potential green annex applications exist. And then below that, there's a, a large space that's unincorporated area, and then there's more incorporated area, and then we get into the other parcels. As we, as that situation, this conversation we're having, does that, that space there between 235 and 202 now become an enclave? What defines an enclave? Because I think that's the question here, and for my mind and, and the hard time that I'm having with this, and isn't about, I, I am 100% in agreement about 2020-04, 2020-06, 2020-13. They're all like clear and I'm in. But when it comes to 2020-10 and beginning to sort of create, and then those other new applications, we start to get into where we're creating new enclaves around the fringes, and then it's about filling those gaps in, instead of it's about filling the actual enclaves that exist within the city limits. And so I want to get clear about what an enclave is or isn't, and how we define that. And would that then become an enclave that we would be filling in?
Attorney Hanson?
Mr. Chair, as far as the state definition of, of an enclave goes, if it is bounded on all sides by a single municipality, that is an enclave. Now, enclaves are not the only concern that you might have with an area. There's also something called pockets. And that gets into whether or not an area is reasonably compact or an annexation is reasonably compact. Because it might create something that doesn't quite meet the definition of an enclave, but it does leave you with kind of the same practical impacts of an area that's mostly isolated or cut off from the remainder of the unincorporated area. As far as the specific area, I wasn't fast enough to catch on the map what area we were talking about, so Mr. Zeigner might have a, a better idea on that particular parcel. I saw him turn his camera on, so he might, he might.
I believe Ben Chumley is there at the meeting, and he has a PowerPoint with some good maps that might be useful. I don't know if Ben is there and can just put that map up. Ben's not on Zoom, so I can't hear him, but I believe he's there.
He's at the podium, Ken.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we, we do have several maps in the county PowerPoint presentation.
I think Commissioner Prizia was asking specifically about that, I think it was the area between around 2020-10 and 2020-13. Is that right, Commissioner Prizia?
It's essentially all the area between 2020-10 and 2020-09, and that goes all the way to 235. You essentially have this now big chunk of unincorporated area that's bound on three sides by the city of Newberry.
Can we pull up slide number three in the PowerPoint, please?
Slide three of the PowerPoint?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the, we're Zooming now, view of it. And then see where.
Hard to hear better.
Sorry.
Yep.
That's a bit better.
So the line there, the, the western side of 2020-10 goes down. I think that's 202nd Street. Someone could confirm that.
Correct.
And then over to 235 approximately, there's some parts of it that go on the other side of 235, but there's that large area, looks small on a map, but it really isn't small in real life, that is unincorporated area currently. And by annexing in these properties, 2020-13, the, the applications in 2020-10, are we creating another enclave?
Mr. Chair, what we're talking about would not create a new enclave, no. You can kind of see from the map, that area south of 2020-13 and 2020-10 is kind of a very large existing unincorporated pocket. I think there's some really large mining areas in that area, but this would not create an enclave.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just to, just to let you know, the public is having a very difficult time hearing the speaker at the podium.
Commissioner Prizia, he said that would not create an enclave.
Right. And Commissioner Prizia?
Yes, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Alfred, you're recognized. Let's make sure your audio is working. Can you hear Commissioner Prizia? No.
There it goes. Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a two-part motion. I move that we approve the annexation of parcels 2020-04, 2020-06. And.
Maybe she could have first.
Should I start over?
Yeah, start over.
Okay. I move that we approve the annexation of parcels 2020-04, 2020-06, 2020-09, and 2020-13, and with the city of Newberry's cooperation, that we de-annex 2020-10, assuming that the de-annexation does not create a new non-contiguous parcel. Second, I move that proposed annexations that reduce, reduce existing enclaves be accepted without argument.
Do I hear a second? Got a motion by Commissioner Alfred and a second by Commissioner Wheeler. Is there any discussion to the motion? To the microphone. And then Commissioner Wheeler, and then Commissioner Lieberman.
The contingencies that we were talking about, would, we may contingent on the annexation of the parcel that's being proposed to be annexed? And that you actually can de-annex that piece on ten? We're not sure we can, right? Is that, there issues?
I think the idea here, Commissioner Wheeler, would be that we would, we would ask for Newberry to use their best efforts to work with the owner of that property to either get it resurveyed and de-annex a portion. If they are not able to, then working with our attorney and their attorney, Scott and Corbin, come up with a legal strategy whereby we may continue this in the mediation, and then there, they would allow us to, basically through summary judgment, win that case, at which point that would then automatically, through the judge's order, be de-annexed.
Okay, good.
Did I say that correctly, Scott?
Exactly right. But do I have to count that as a loss if, if we have to?
Yeah, it would actually be memorialized in a plaque that we would send you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Prizia, and then there's a hand up online, and I don't, and I'm sorry. Let me recognize Manager Lieberman and then Commissioner Prizia. Manager Lieberman?
Just two things real quick. One.
Let's make sure we can hear.
Sorry. The first point is that the second part of the motion, there is concern because there may be, in fact, legal arguments on filling in those enclaves. And I have concern that you are going to enter into an agreement that, that may attempt to bind a future board to not exercising a legal right in the future. And I don't think that you can actually agree to bind a future board not to exercise a legal valid right that you have.
So the way I, Manager Lieberman, the way I interpreted that motion was that Commissioner Alfred would be signaling that, to the extent Newberry staff and our staff could agree that we were not creating an enclave within an enclave, that when we were annexing a parcel within an enclave, that we were not expanding that enclave or creating a new enclave, that, that there would be, there would be direction from this board that we would approve that, and that our staff would come to us if they thought there was an issue. That's how I would interpret what you were asking for, because I, I agree with Andrew Lieberman. I don't think that we can arbitrarily just say, you don't have to follow the law because we said today.
Well, I, I'd be happy to amend the motion to say that in good faith, or something like that, that, that takes out that requirement for future. Does, does that work?
Yeah, I mean, it, it goes back to a previous board gave some direction at a previous joint meeting at the city of Newberry with the previous commission. And it was the, those collective bodies that were saying, let's work together to close enclaves. And I, to the, to the mayor's point, I appreciate keep knocking on doors. I mean, that's our goal. We want to close these out. And when I've been associated with the, the city of, the city of Newberry staff, when there is an applicant that wants to annex, it's a meeting and it's a discussion, and it's a, let's see what the county says, and I think that's the right process. Commissioner Prizia, you're recognized?
Yes, I, I want to know if this includes the idea that if Newberry wants to annex a property outside, like, like that includes these areas? So around their edges, they have lots of enclaves. And I'm not, I'm not in favor of us passing a, something right now that would direct our staff not to question closing off those, those little peninsulas that are all around their borders that look like little Pacman around the edges by annexing additional properties around them to turn those into enclaves and then annex the pieces within those, like we're doing with 2020-10 currently. So is, does that make sense? Like, I'm, I'm, I'm all for us continuing to close enclaves that exist within the city limits, but I'm not interested in trying to close the little peninsulas and enclaves on their borders.
Yeah, I think, I think the way to resolve that would be through the motion saying, for example, enclaves such as 04 and 06.
Can I, can I just clarify? That my understanding is that an enclave is something that is completely surrounded by the other city's property, and it, it does not include any of the edge annexations. And a lot of heads are nodding, so I think I got that right.
Yep. That makes sense, Commissioner Prizia? Okay. Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Chair, just to address some of the concern about future direction, the, this process is not initiated or cannot be initiated by staff. So to the extent that there's concern that, you know, in the future, the board would be challenging, you know, filling in an enclave, that would be brought by staff to the Board of County Commissioners. And at that time, if you felt that there was not a legal issue or a practical issue, the board does not have to vote to begin this process or challenge the annexation.
Understood. Okay, any other discussion by this board? Mr. Chair?
I don't, so.
Manager Lieberman?
I would ask that any agreement tonight be tentative, subject to executing an actual written agreement if we're going to reach terms this evening. Because we need to make sure that the agreement has, you know, consideration for the county in it. As you all know, a, a agreement is offer acceptance and consideration, and we need to make sure there's adequate consideration in this agreement in writing.
Commissioner Alfred, any, any opposition to it coming back to us for final agreement?
Any, any?
Adding that it would come back, that this, this tentative agreement would come back to us for final agreement?
This particular motion or just anything in the future?
No, this motion.
Um.
Why are you thinking about that?
I can't hear you.
I, I want to make one comment, why are you thinking about your answer there? Because we've been here before too. And, and I appreciate your inclusion of that in the motion. When I asked this board to state it publicly, I don't, I don't necessarily think that that part needs to be in the motion. I think that if you guys are all nodding your heads, that yes, staff, when we have things like 2020-06, we're going to see that as reducing the size of an existing enclave, but we're not going to try to tie, we're not going to put it in the motion that there's, that these kinds of things. I think if we have a head nod, because in my experience, once the, once we go back to write it down, the lawyers get a hold of it, and then a, a year goes by and we're right back here again. So I appreciate, and let me also say that how pleasurable this experience has been. This has been a great conversation with some really hard questions that are asked over some really serious issues, but I really feel like we're actually trying to work together, and I just appreciate the sincerity of your motion.
Well, I, I was just going to say that we can move forward, that's why I made it a two-part motion, so we can move forward with part one, and part two, we can defer. Does that work?
Yeah, that, that's fine with me. And Commissioners, just so you can hear where I am, I'm, I'm good with an, with an 06 and an 04 city working towards those, but I share Commissioner Prizia's concerns about enclosing between 010 and 09, and then coming up with some sort of definitions. But the slam dunk ones, I think, are good if we give that head nod. I, I think there's probably pretty good consensus on there unless, unless it's adamantly breaking the law, to Commissioner Chestnut's point. I mean, Commissioner Chestnut, just, I got to say it, you know, when we ended the Boundary Adjustment Act, he said, look, we're going to follow the law, and if it doesn't follow the law, we're going to dispute it. And, you know, we've, much of these disputes have arose from the repeal of the Boundary Adjustment Act. That's an editorial, there's probably 10 different opinions about that from 10 different ones of us, but that's, that's, that is why we're here, why I think we are here. So, all right, so I've got a motion. Mike, did you want to add anything? Your hand was up, but you may, okay. When you see agreement, you be quiet, that's good. I understand. Any other discussion from this board?
So can I ask, are we splitting this motion in two now?
I'm, I'm going to ask the maker of the motion to restate the motion.
Mr. Alfred?
Do you want me to restate the first part?
Yeah.
All right. I move that we approve the annexation of parcels 2020-04, 2020-06, 2020-09, and 2020-13, assuming, well, and work with the city of Newberry towards the de-annexation of 2020-10, assuming that the de-annexation does not create a non-contiguous parcel. Does that work?
Attorney? I mean, Madam Manager? Yep. Okay, does everybody understand the motion? All right, so at this time, there's no more discussion from this board, and I think we'd like to open it up to the public to speak to the motion. And then I'll take your word that you're going to move to your board on the next item. So is there anyone from the public? I'm going to follow the mayor's lead. If you are here, if you'll make your way to the podium and stay six feet apart to give us your thoughts on the motion. If you're at home, if you'll dial that number, 312-626-6799. And once you are in the Zoom meeting, if you're already in the Zoom meeting and you'd like to speak to this motion, go ahead and raise your hand. We'll see if one of our awesome administrators can recognize you, and we'll see if we've got any comments to the motion on the floor, which essentially is the mayor's original proposal, with the city and the county working together to drop the dispute on the floor and work on the one that is 2010-10 to de-annex that item. Any hand raised?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
While, while you're waiting on the public, I think it's important for the new members of our commission to hear what, what our perspective was on when we brought you these annexations. We have known the board to take the position that those enclaves that are especially toward the center of Newberry should be filled in. They should be, and we have in fact encouraged them to. To be consistent with state law, they would need to be pretty much filled in at one time. And we know that that's not practical and that it will be done in steps and will be done over time. The, once you saw certain annexations, and you have let many annexations pass without challenging them through the years, but once you saw annexations that did not meet the statute, did not meet the desire to have Newberry be a compact city, and Newberry would give you no assurances that it won't continue to annex further and further out into the unincorporated area without filling in the areas that it had, you chose to challenge based mainly on those. based mainly on those ones that you're still complaining about. What we said to you at that time was if you choose to challenge, we'd like to move forward with all of them. And the reason we like to move forward with all of them is because that makes a stronger case. It also makes something that Newberry wants from you in this perspective. And from my perspective, you are giving Newberry what it wants from you now and not necessarily getting anything back. And ultimately, I think that it does matter what's on paper. And I'm sorry that it takes longer to write things down, but it does, but that's when you actually realize what you're getting, when it's on paper. So I'm, I'm suggesting to you and I'm letting you know openly that you're making our case worse if we do end up going to litigation and, and you're giving up some of the things that are clearly not consistent with the statute in exchange for nothing on paper, nothing, no, no obligation on their part to do anything. I think that's important to say because there's nothing that's coming out of this so far that I can enforce against Newberry. If they do nothing when they walk away from here, I can't do anything about that. So I think it's important that you hear that.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Commissioner Prizia? And I, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment on the motion. I don't see any hands raised and the podium is not being overwhelmed by people, so we'll bring it back to the board for further discussion. So Commissioner Prizia?
I'm, I'm still interested in, in understanding that I thought that there was a comment from both myself and, and you, Mr. Chair, that 2020-13 was still an issue for you in 2020-10 and how that was de-annexed. And so I, while I am 100% comfortable with going forward with the, the ones that are internal to the city, I feel less comfortable going forward with the ones on the outside of this, the, that, on the edges of the city without a, without further discussion.
Yeah, so I'll give you my feeling on that, Commissioner Prizia, as we've discussed this. Knowing that those applications are in between 13 and 10 and they're pending, I have a comfort level. Those are also within the solid line that our staff, that our staff recommended. And so I'm willing to take the city of Newberry on good faith that they're going to work to correct 2020-10 and fill in between 2020-13 and what will become the new 2020-10. But I also would like to see them working on those enclaves and pockets within the line and not move out. I've also moved to the east, northeast, outside of those lines. I share your concerns with regards to annexing voluntarily those items outside of that solid line that our staff and the city staff had a difficulty with coming to some sort of an agreement. But I've also talked to a number of the city commissioners and heard them say publicly and privately that it is our policy to develop from the core out, not from the out in. And I'd like to see how that works over the next couple of years because if some cities are more aggressive and more progressive about their annexations, and I think if we can resolve this issue and they can resolve 2020-10 and we can watch how they kind of follow up with what they said they're going to do, I think that it's an opportunity for both boards to kind of work together under that approach. They understand, I believe, I haven't heard from them, but they'll, they'll speak to it tonight, they understand the cost of annexing and developing the farther from the city core. I mean, there's a large sprawling cost to, to doing that with regards to the bringing on of city and water and, and obviously other municipal services. So I'm going to take them at their word that that's how they want to develop their city because that's what they told me. And I also think there's a real opportunity that when you have a dispute with a previous board and you resolve it with a new board, that there's opportunities to work together. And I'm kind of seeing that happening. I saw it actually before tonight it even happened because of the questions that you and Commissioner Alfred have continued to ask throughout this entire process. I hear manager, I, I hear Attorney Torres with regards to we're making the case worse, but ultimately, in my opinion, we don't want to get to a case. We want to get the mediation and solve it. So I don't see, I, I hear that legal argument, I get it, I'm glad she's making it, we need to hear that. But my goal would be if we don't resolve it tonight, that we resolve it at mediation. And so hopefully, we won't get to that. So those are my collective comments on your question, but I see your hands back up, so go ahead and give me your thoughts.
I, well, I never took it down, I guess I didn't really, I forget about the lowering hand part, sorry. But I, I guess I will just say that I, for me, the, the, the understand this, I understanding of, I still don't have a comfort level of understanding what they're planning to do with 2020-10. What I understood by de-annexing was only that they were de-annexing because of that non-contiguous touching component and that the remainder of that entire parcel would remain annexed into their city. So, and the only reason that that is contiguous is because of the applications that are currently in process.
Yeah, my understanding, I'll tell you my understanding of what their intention is because it's, you know, sometimes we hear the same thing, but we, we each hear something different. They're going to take that corner, that square that's connected with a diamond, they're going to ask them to survey it and withdraw his application. And if they can't do that, then they're going to say, well, what's connected to it right now? We're not going to, we're, we're going to work with the county to not allow that. At which point now they have an issue with that, that piece, and so now they will be connecting with the green to 2020-13, which I don't object to. I think once we allow 2020-13, it, I would be okay with annexing those, that, those two parcels that they put up on the screen earlier up to that solid line, which is where the county staff and the city staff and our county staff has suggested that they only annex to that solid line. So I wouldn't object to that. I'm okay with that. Did that answer your question for me?
It does, but that's an imaginary line that nobody's agreed to except for our county staff.
That's right.
So by, by saying that they're only annexing to that line, that's just today, and we're allowing them to annex that line, which means that the next thing outside of that is now contiguous to that line and they can keep going. So until we get agreement on that line, it's very difficult for me to sort of, or have an agreement on some line, it's very hard for me, but anyway.
No, and I couldn't agree with you more, but I also think there's some opportunities to work on that next. I mean, that's, that, you know, I'm going to propose another joint meeting date at the end of this meeting, and I think that could certainly be on the agenda, which is them agreeing to some sort of outer boundary and us agreeing to work with them on that. But that's for another meeting. Okay, any other discussion from this board? You want to get involved and talk us out of it? Oh, okay. Any other discussion from this board on the motion before we vote? Okay, let's go ahead and vote, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Alfred?
Aye.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Reluctantly, aye.
And Commissioner Cornell is aye. So we have a 4-0 with Commissioner Chestnut off. So we have a 4-0 with Commissioner Chestnut. If he comes back on, we'll ask him.
Well, first, while I ask Scott to help us draft the wording of this motion to make sure that we've got what we've, everything the county commission just said, we make sure we state it correctly so everyone feels comfortable. Again, let me thank you for this, Commissioner Prizia, thank you for that reluctant aye. I know that we've got four annexations that are all internal, that are waiting to see the resolution tonight. So I think this kind of conversation gives those folks a boost to say, okay, I'm going to be successful and I want to come in. So I appreciate that. And I want to also reiterate that I'm more than willing to have any conversation with the B O C C on any topic at any time. We, we would, we love these joint meetings, we have a great big basketball room here, so after the meeting, we'll, we'll play some. Scott, do you have the wording right for our motion for our board to, and all our motion needs to be is on the parcel number inside 2020-10 about how we are going to work with the county to either resurvey that and cut off it or go to mediation? And I think we want to put the language in the motion that we would at that point, if that's where we have to go, we would ask for voluntary dismissal to pull the whole wind property, windmill property out, not to put you on the spot.
No, not a problem, Mr. Mayor. The, you're exactly right. The appropriate motion would be to accept the county's motion to validate ordinances 2020-04, 2020-06, 2020-09, and 2020-13 that the city of Newberry would seek to contract or de-annex that portion of the eastern part of 2020-10, work with the property owner to do so, failing which, we will seek mediation with the county. And our agreement would be to sever off the portion that is the offending part.
Scott, can you move the microphone a little bit closer to you? The people on Zoom are having trouble hearing.
Sorry about that. Do you need me to repeat the entire motion or, or just the?
Did everyone? And Commissioner Prizia, did you hear it? Were you following?
No.
Okay, everybody's so good so far, so just finish up.
So the, the end of that motion would be to sever off the eastern portion of ordinance 2020-10. And if we are unable to do so, Mr. Hanson and I will work on that. If we're unable to do that with the property owner, that we would then seek mediation and our agreement would be that that portion of the property would be severed and we would confirm that with a judge to sever off that portion of, of the annexation.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Farnsworth, can you turn your video on so I can see if you're trying to speak? And while you're looking for that button, do I hear that motion from my board? I have a motion from Commissioner Clark. Do I hear a second to that motion? I have a second from Commissioner, second from Commissioner Northfleet with an ear-splitting ring. Do I have any comments or questions from the dais on the motion on the floor? Commissioner Martin?
I think my only thought is the fact that the, if the GMA is sort of the authority that the county wants to assert, it would seem moving forward that we kind of potentially use that as a guiding principle with regards to what is disputed or not disputed. I mean, mostly what we talk about from an annexation standpoint is sort of on the clerical level. In practice, as the attorney mentioned, you know, all the services are coming from Newberry already. So if it's just a matter of the waste truck going up and down, I mean, that only really happens once a week. So beyond that, I also just kind of want to remind ourselves that it's not what the county wants or what the city wants, it's really, should be focused on what the property owner wants. They're the ones that are desiring this and I, at any step in the process, I want to just make sure that we keep in mind that they do have their own property rights and they should be protected as much, as much as possible.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. And I, I do, I want to clarify, when I say that we are aggressively going out and knocking on doors, those are all internal. We don't go to the edge of any property and knock on those doors. We go to the enclaves that exist, those are the ones that we have held referendums, workshops, talked to, talked to people directly. That's where we have been aggressive. All right, Dallas, we put our phone number up. Were there any other comments from the dais? Okay, I have nobody at the podium, so we will give a second here while we get the phone number up. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion probably second on the floor to accept the county's motion to discontinue their objections to four of the annexations and to separate a parcel out of 2020-10 and to work in conjunction with the county to figure out a best, good faith resolution to that one. If you've been listening to the conversation, you know, that's a poor summary of an hour and a half long conversation. If you'd like to call and make a comment on that conversation, now would be the appropriate time to do so. You can accomplish that by dialing the phone number on your screen. That'll get you in the meeting. Once you're in the meeting, look at the bottom of your screen, you'll see a little hand symbol. Look at that hand symbol, that'll let us know that you'd like to address the commission. We'll make sure you have the opportunity to do so. Give just a few seconds to make sure everyone who's trying to dial in has the ability to do so. Anyone live in the audience, next speak now, forever hold your peace. Dallas, do we have anyone with their hand raised? Thank you, sir. Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Commissioner Farnsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Northfleet? Commissioner Martin? Commissioner Clark?
Hey, manager, did you vote? Yeah, my, my God, I lost connection, my internet connection. Okay.
Okay, we have a unanimous vote on our side. And then Commissioner Chestnut, I'm going to turn you back over to Chair Cornell.
Mr. Chestnut, are you there?
Uh, yes, Chair.
We lost the connection with you when we had our vote and I wanted to.
Yeah, I lost my internet. I don't know, came home, I shouldn't have hit the county today, but I came home, I always wanted to this problem.
That's okay, that's okay. I'm going to use my chair prerogative because you sat through an hour and 29 minutes and then you missed the one minute on the vote. So the motion was simplified. Commissioner Alfred just kind of restated her motion. It was the same one that you heard, which is that we would drop our objections to 04, 06, 09, and 13 and work with the city of Newberry to de-annex or contract 2020-10. Did you want to record a yea or a nay on that motion?
Uh, nay, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I, I, I agree with the rest of them, I just don't agree with 10 and 9, so, and that's just my feelings.
Understood. And, and you're not necessarily alone in your, in your issues. We had a, let the record reflect that that's 4-0, 4-1 with Commissioner Chestnut in dissent and Commissioner Prizia, a reluctant yes, I think is what she said. All right, so, Mr. Mayor, we have on our agenda next is public comment. You want to go ahead and run that?
Absolutely, that's what we have, well, we have actually city manager comment, but it's late on the night. Can we skip city manager commission comments? We've all, any commissioner want to? Okay, let's go straight to public comment. Dallas, if you want, again, you'll put our phone number up. Ladies and gentlemen, we've come to the end of tonight's joint meeting with the B O C C. Been a wonderful evening of us working together. If you'd like to call in and make a comment on that, the phone number is on your screen. All you need to do is dial that number, that'll get you into the meeting. Once you're in the meeting, look at the bottom of your screen, you'll see a little hand symbol. Simply click that hand symbol, that'll let us know you'd like to address either the B O C C or the Newberry Commission. We'll make sure you have the opportunity to do so. We're going to begin on live comment and then we'll go to virtual comment. Anybody like to address the joint meeting, come on up to the podium? It's not the red light, it's the green light down there. And don't forget to introduce yourselves.
Can you hear me? I'm Joy Glanzer. Welcome, commission. Thank you so much for coming to Newberry again tonight. This is the second time in two weeks we've seen you, February 6th at our Soil Collection. All of you showed up and we thank you very much for that. Newberry has some very promising projects coming up and it would be the envy of even larger cities. But there's one project I hope you would give some consideration to, which is not in our city limits, but it's a regional impact for the west and north part of the county, including Newberry, High Springs, Helatua, and La Crosse. It's a regional resource center. I sent you all emails this morning inviting you to, to tour the facility on Thursday, which is a great location for this center, serving those citizens who are travel-challenged, who are otherwise cannot make it to Gainesville to participate in all your wonderful social services like the health department and other sectors. This regional resource center would be similar to the Southwest Advocacy Group that you all helped cooperatively create. A few of you have already said you'd be there Thursday and we're grateful for that and I'll be here after the meeting if anyone else wants to schedule it. We're staggering the, the meetings or this tours so that the sunshine and the commissioners are all cooperating. We're also inviting the mayors of the small communities to come as well to see this facility. While my associate Nancy Levin and I have brainstormed these ideas, you could say we're just instigators, but it's you, it's going to be your joy and challenge to make it a reality. You know, every project, every great project starts with a vision and this is one of those projects I think we all can believe in. And so I look forward to working with you and seeing where we can go with it. And again, thank you for coming to Newberry. It's good to see you and it was a great meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone else in the public who wishes to comment? Seeing none. Newberry City Commissioners.
Okay, so before we get to our German, we've got county commission comment. Commissioner Prizia, do you have any comments?
I do, actually. I'm, I'm going to comment on my reluctant yes because I, I was serious about that. I, I feel like I'm, my desire is to build bridges. I said that when I ran for office and I meant it. And I, I hope that this is a bridge. And I, I hope that this is a bridge built, and I hope that it will bring further conversation about growth management in the city of Newberry. I, the, our staff took the time to put together information about land estimates and the potential of residential development within the city of Newberry. And I asked a question of your manager when I came to visit not that long ago about how big does Newberry want to be when it grows up? What does Newberry see as what kind of city it wants to be when it grows up? And I want, and I really wanted an answer to that question, and I didn't get it. I really am interested to know, is it, are you a rural city that's providing lots of open space for residents that want to remain in that kind of a setting? Or are you looking to be a dense, compact city with lots of residents growing up? Are you looking to be more of a spread-out city with lots of people with ranchettes? What is it that is the vision for the city? And I hear compactness, but that's not what I see in the patterns of annexation in the city over time. So I'm hopeful that this is the start of a conversation about compact growth and development on the western part of our county. And I think we have an obligation as the commission to also hold to that and think about the way that we support growth and development on the western side of our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut.
No, I have none.
Commissioner Alfred?
Thank you. I also visited Newberry not that long ago, and I was very excited to hear about the goals of Newberry to become an agriculturally centered city. I don't know if that's the right term or not. And that you plan to utilize a lot of that annexed land as urban farmland and work with IFAS on research projects and all kinds of things. And I'm very excited to hear more about that. And I also look forward to seeing you all at the Agricultural Fair in the next week or so, right?
Thank you, Commissioner Alfred. Commissioner Wheeler?
He just kept a path to your goat showing because I got the blue ribbon last year.
I got, I got, I got the, the third place.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, you got first.
We nailed it. Yeah, we nailed it. No, I, I just wanted to share with you two, I've been working with a group in Micanopee. I don't know if you all know Chris Stokes over there, Pastor Chris Stokes or not, but he's doing one, making wonderful progress in that community and building the young people there. He's trying to start a ball program, sports program. I think you all have a ball club here, don't you? You all do T-ball and, well, he's trying to get that going over there. And he's met a little resistance from the group over there. I think it's an older group of citizens who are part of the antique, antique industry over there in Micanopee. But in any case, if you all know of people in your community, if you have extra materials, bats, whatever, I think Joni White down in Archer gave them money to get bases. So they really don't have anything, and they haven't been able to get much help from the city of, the town of Micanopee. So if you all have any extra materials like that. And then reporting in from Hawthorne, Mayor Surrancey over there is trying to collect monies for some of the 4H and the FFA kids who will be showing in this youth fair. And they collect monies for kids who haven't been able to gather enough money. Somehow, I don't know if they buy their products or sell their, you know, however that is, but he's collecting money for some of those kids who haven't been able to get sponsors together. So if you can send sports equipment to Micanopee and money to Hawthorne, we're going to make this a family affair. So thank you all very much for having us. It's always great to be here in Newberry.
Thank you, Commissioner Wheeler. And my final comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the hospitality, the coffee. Whoever made it, it was spot on. I appreciate that very well, very much. For those of you that are watching at home, thank you for participating. My, my colleague always shares, steals some of my thunder, but I did want to announce the Alachra County Youth Fair and Livestock Show, March fifth through the ninth. We're excited about the ribbon cutting of the Alachra County Ag and Equestrian Center, which will be on the evening of Saturday, March sixth at five forty-five. I, I did want to recognize Commissioner Wheeler for the blue ribbon. Mayor Marlowe got the second place. Second place ribbon, and, and I fell in the third place. I don't know how that happened. I had my boots on. Maybe they felt sorry for the little guy. I don't know. So I'll be participating in that again this year. The second thing I wanted to mention is I wanted to thank Mayor Marlowe. You, you approached me, I think in January, about a county-wide summit. I thought it was a great idea. The local delegation also thought it was a great idea. I told you that our process was we're going to be having a county-wide, county-commission-wide summit this Thursday, on, no, next Thursday, on March fourth. And we are scheduling joint meetings with the different cities. Then once legislation, legislative session ends, then we think we would have a great opportunity to have a county-wide summit, hopefully in the beginning of June, or depending on scheduling, it may be the end of June. So I wanted to give you the dates of all of the city meetings and ask that you pencil in a date for yourself. It's not yet confirmed. So we've got the city of Gainesville at the end of March, March twenty-ninth. We've got High Springs scheduled for April eighth. I worked with the mayor on the agenda for that today. We've got Archer on April twelfth. After Archer, we, we are not yet confirmed, but we're looking at Micanopee on May thirteenth. After Micanopee, La Crosse, or May sixth or thirteenth, La Crosse, which is also not yet confirmed on May tenth. Hawthorne is scheduled for May eighteenth. We've got Waldo scheduled for May twentieth. And then we've got the city of Alachua, not quite confirmed, but preliminarily scheduled for May twenty-fourth. We'd ask that you look at your calendar. If you are available on April twenty-sixth, that would be a great day for us to meet again. We're happy to come out here. We can work on a joint agenda. I heard some ideas tonight. I know that's right after your election on the April thirteenth. So we look forward to perhaps, perhaps that date if we can get confirmation. And you don't have to give it to us tonight. You can talk to your manager and your, your commissioners. But that would be great, and it would be very much appreciated. And with that, the county commission is adjourned. Thank you.